We'll do the site review for the Sandstone presentation.
Good evening. My name's Chris Howard. I'm with Bram Hall Engineering and Surveying. And the audience, I have Tom Baldwin from our office also. We're here tonight to present Phase 1 of Sandstone Parkway. Yep. Phase 1 of Sandstone is what's in red. It's 3,500 feet of 28-foot back-to-back of curb roadway from Oberlin Road to just east of the existing creek. This is the first stepping stone of the project. Obviously, the roadway needs to be built first, and then it'll roll into future development residential. This first phase will include, obviously, utility extensions, water through real water. Sanitary will have a pump station. This phase will pump to, it'll go to Oberlin Road. And obviously, the storm water management for the agreement will be more than what's required per the agreement. And that'll drain to the existing, I think it's the east branch of the Beaver Creek. So, pretty much, what you can see up there is there's existing basins in blue that'll be built with this first phase. These phases, obviously, the water will go into that, it'll be detained, and then it'll be released into the existing ditch that runs through the property. You want to go to the next screen? This is just an overall utility plan. It shows the future, obviously, all the lots in the future, along with the commercial. But this is strictly just the roadway for Phase 1. That length is about 3,600 feet. You can go ahead and do the next one. This is just in the large view, showing, obviously, the future layout of the lots. One thing to note is there, we don't want this to be a raceway, four cars going up and down the road. This will be a county road. We have traffic calming islands that'll be installed, obviously, to slow the traffic down. There's three of them in this phase. And we have a detailed, kind of a landscape plan to kind of show you what it would look like. This is just the typical section. Once again, this will be a county road, so this will be an asphalt roadway with concrete, curb and gutter. I know the township has changed their requirements to concrete. The subdivision will be all concrete, 28-foot wide, but the county has insisted, obviously, since it's their road, it will be an asphalt road. This is just a landscaping plan for the entrance to Oberlin Road, kind of showing the sign that'll be installed, landscaping and whatnot. There'll be the 8-foot asphalt path on the south side of the road. And this kind of shows the traffic calming islands as a sample, with the sole purpose of, obviously, slowing the traffic down, so it's not a speedway. That's kind of it in a nutshell. It's just a roadway with Phase 1.
Will you be tying into a 24-inch main there, or do you know the size?
On, for what, what utility?
Water and the, you're going to be putting the hydrants in at the same time you're doing the road?
Correct, correct. We've met with real water, obviously, to get their approval. We're going to tie into the existing 24-inch that is along the turnpike. It'll be a 12-inch that runs along the main road, and then it'll feed 8-inch throughout the subdivision. Real Water's talking about extending down 58 to tie into the main entrance off of Sandstone Parkway in the future. So there'll be redundancy.
Okay.
Hydrants will obviously be for real waters. Obviously, that's open for discussion. They're in the business of selling water, not fighting fires, so.
You're also tying into a 4-inch on Oberlin Road? Is that going to be, are you pulling water from there?
No, the main feed is off the 24-inch off of the turnpike.
That's for recirculation?
Correct, redundancy. In the future, if the real water wants to expand that, at least they have the ability, because that'll be a 12-inch.
You mentioned a lift station for the sanitary. What kind of backups on that?
It'll have a traditional standby generator. It'll be a Gorman ROP, because that's going to follow along with the county wants.
Any type of alarm on that the neighbors will hear?
It'll probably have the flashing light, you know, telemetry. I'm not sure the county, obviously, will dictate what they want.
You guys do a traffic study yet?
Yes. Traffic impact study has been submitted. ODOT is, has reviewed it. Right now, the focus is on 58. They just had a couple minor comments on the study, but the study has been submitted and is close to being approved.
What about on Oberlin? Turn lane, or?
Nothing's required there. The idea is that most of the traffic's obviously going to go to 58. Your large redundancy, your commercial, when they come off 58, they're going to want to get right on the turnpike or go right on 58. We'll make that, obviously, available to everybody once it's approved by ODOT.
Going through your drawings for Basin A, you only show 25 feet off of an existing house. In our Article 2,700, we call it 50 feet from property lines and right-ofways to outside toe of embankment, outside edge of spoil, or the high watermark, which will put your high watermark only 29 feet off of property line.
Okay, duly noted.
You're also only 35 feet off the Sandstone Parkway right-ofway. Basin B, you're only 41 feet off of the Sandstone Parkway. And Basin C, you're only 17 feet off of Parkway right-ofway. None of those are in compliance.
We will, we'll modify accordingly.
Also, the binder you submitted, I don't know if you guys knew this, but there's six spots where you're calling out, three of them were for Mill Ridge Subdivision, North Ridgeville, and three of them were for Brentwood Subdivision, Eaton Township.
It's typos.
Okay.
The important information there, I think it's just the title on the top.
You mentioned this is going to be going over and above for storm water. Can you explain how you are doing that?
We're providing more storage than required. Obviously, the county requires a critical storm. Critical storm is the 25-year, so we'll provide additional capacity beyond what's required for those storm events.
How's that compare to Hampshire Farms?
I can't. We weren't involved with that one, so I can't answer that.
I'm going through also the notes for your storm, or, yeah, your storm water prevention settlements and that. I didn't see any type of notes about what would happen if they exposed existing drainage tile in the areas of excavation.
Typically, they'll tie in whatever they find.
Okay. Could that be added to the notes, please?
Yeah.
That's part of the settlement agreement. The rotary hubs, you mentioned you now have three. Is that correct?
Correct.
In the settlement agreement, those were said they were going to take place at the intersections to Redwood. Is that what's happening?
It is not. The reason why is because with those traffic islands for truck turning movements, you couldn't make them work. They'd be running over the middle of them if you had a large moving vehicle. So it didn't make sense to put them at the intersections.
Then the, you mentioned the Metro Park Trail. How much input did the Metro Park have with that?
Theirs will be in the commercial side of, and there's been conversations between the developer and Metro Parks regarding that. So that's still on, still planned.
How far east does that go? Does it go all the way to Oberlin?
That will go, the actual 8-foot trail?
Yeah.
It'll go all the way.
Okay.
It'll follow the Sandstone Parkway.
So it'll just dead-end at Oberlin, then?
Correct.
Okay.
That's it right now.
Remy, when we talked earlier this month, or last month, about having this, you spoke with Mark Lesnar about it, correct?
Yes. Mark was unable to be here tonight. He twisted his back. He's indisposed. So, but Mark looked at everything, and he thought it was, it was good. He didn't have too much to say.
So he's good with the plan?
Yes.
As proposed with the?
With the provisions.
With the amendments that Colin brought up?
Yes.
And yourself?
I agree with Colin.
Okay. Anyone else have any comment? Go ahead, Mr. Yerich.
Hi, I first have a question. These basins, are they retention or detention?
They'll be wet, so they'll be retention.
Okay, it'll be retention basin. And looking at the plans, some of them are going to be close to 13, 14 feet deep?
It varies. Obviously, when you have a wet basin, you want to have some depth. Otherwise, you'll get a lot of overgrowth, and over time, those become a mess to maintain.
My question. Okay, my question, too. My concern would be up in the northeast corner, that retention basin is close to Oberlin Road, and part of what Colin brought up, setback of 50 feet, also some kind of barrier between the road and that basin. My biggest nightmare would be having somebody come up missing in 40 years from now. Somebody will be doing some kind of a look, and they'll say, hey, I think there's a car on the bottom of this pond. And then pull it out, and, you know, somebody didn't make it home some night, and nobody could find him, you know. It, it could, something like that could happen. Close to that road, that's a bad curve. There've been accidents on the east side. I can remember at least one on the west side. My concern would be somebody would come off the road and wind up in that pond. You might not even know they're there. So, some kind of barrier, you know, setback, barrier, something to keep somebody from accidentally winding up into that basin. Second item, how far north of the property line is the center line of that spline road? The southernly property line of the project?
The southernly property line, so?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how far that is. Far up Oberlin Road is that from the property line? Get a good...
So you're asking from this southernly property line?
Yeah, go up, go down to Oberlin Road and go up.
Going up?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, something like that, I could...
I'm trying to get a grasp where that is going to be exactly. And you reference on the other side of the road on the drawing, a drive and a mailbox. The only one that I could think of that would possibly meet that would be what I would call the Zavozik House. And that would put the drive close to the, close to the house. The question would be whether that drive could be brought more to the south to avoid an intersection in front of our house.
I think the roadway alignment is pretty much set where we have it. To move Sandstone Parkway introduces other issues. So I think the location of where that main drive is is pretty set.
What other issues are involved in that?
Well, there's a, there's a litany of issues, obviously, moving something after the plans are done. We can look into it, but I can't, I can't promise that. We'd have to look at what poles are in the way, what other information is there.
Let me grab that one real quick. I mean, I think, I think the primary concern is that south of that drive, this is actually a wetland area that we don't want in that. So environmentally, we don't want to go near that area at this point. If we move that drive down, that'll cause other issues. I guess Chris didn't want to say the word, but it's a concern.
What's, what is the timeframe on this?
For the roadway? Right now, we have it submitted to the county. Obviously, this is part of a TIF for the roadway. So, once the county reviews it, we address any of the comments they have, they'll form their TIF agreement with the developer. And then, once they bid it out, obviously, they're hoping to bid it out this, early this year, and have it under construction. So, but it'll be a county-led project for the roadway, because it's TIF-funded.
When, when do they anticipate bidding on this?
I can't answer that. I know they're, it could be a month that they're bidding this out. But we're waiting for them to give their final approval on the plans.
You know, John?
Well, so I, I met with, I had a moment with Bob Viver earlier today, actually, to talk about that. We're in our final TIF revisions, and obviously, once the TIF is signed and approved, then we can move forward with taking the plans that Bram Hall's done and getting them into the county's hands to bid them out. So we're looking at about two weeks to finish up the TIF. And I would say then, through their TIF process, probably under 45 days. I'd say within the two to three-month timeframe, this thing would be let, outbid. And we hope to get this under somewhere in June, we might start breaking ground. Obviously, the intent is to get this first basin issued. So we're running against, and believe it or not, I know it's April already, but we're already running against the county to get this thing ready. It's an important move forward.
Any other questions?
I had one. Was wondering, Colin had mentioned about the existing drain tiles and stuff, and leave them as is. Some of the drain tiles actually run to my property, which is up north, in two spots I know of particularly. So I just wonder what would be the disposition of those?
Well, if they're, if they're running towards your property, they would just cap them. They run into them. We can't make it run uphill, so.
Right.
But they would just have to cap them. It's something that in the field, when they see it, they'd have to cap it or tie it into existing storm or whatever's available.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
In your Phase 1, you're going to say you're going to start the roadway and whatnot. I don't know how all this works and everything. When do you see as far as your retention ponds, or whatever you want to call them, when are you wanting to break ground on those? I'm just kind of curious how that falls in line with the road being built.
Usually, that'll be your first step, is digging those.
Okay. I happen to be the property that you're seen to be too close to, and that blank area up above, let's say that'd be the north. And is that, or is that all not considered wetlands?
That area, yeah, that's in the white, correct.
Okay. Well, that's where my question is. I thank him for bringing it up, but it appears that you are too close to my property to be doing what you're doing. And those ponds are right up on there, and so that's why I was curious to know is if and when you're going to do that, what you do first, how you do it, because I would like to make sure I have clarification on where you're supposed to be digging and where you're not. And if we could possibly, I haven't seen, that was the first time I saw a screen, a print on the screenings, the trees, hills, mounds for the traffic lights and everything else. I had, I had looked at the prints, but I had not seen that before. I would like to see if we could see a detail of how that's going to be right there on the entrance on Oberlin Road. And I don't know the name of the road you're putting in for the spur for the houses, or where that road comes out that points directly at the back of my property. Could we get a peek at how that's going to be, what's going in? I'd like to see it if that's possible. At this time, if I'm out of line asking to see that, I'll wait.
For the sign, is that what you're talking about, or? You're asking about the sign that would be?
The screening, the trees, the thing for the entrance on Oberlin Road, and whatever the name of the road you're putting in behind it, yes.
Yeah.
That was the first time I've seen that. That's why I was curious. Is that, is that mounds? Is that hills? Is that hills with trees?
It'll be a blend of both.
It'll be a blend of both. And other curiosity I have is part of that settlement we had, you're supposed to be, is there going to be kind of any aeration? I know it might not be redundant for a pond that deep. Is there anything in the drawings or in the works and everything where they're going to have aeration, fountain, or anything for that, for the water?
They're going to want a fountain in there, obviously, so it's not stagnant.
Could you please state your name and address?
Jeff Pilar, 7884 Oberlin Road, the little square up there that keeps showing up around the ponds.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I just got one. Dave Barner, 7887 Oberlin Road. Can you go back to the main view?
Yeah, on the square that's kind of surrounded by the development there. Oh, sorry. All right. Yeah, on the square that's kind of surrounded by the, by the development there. And during the last, when, before, when you voted on it, I've mentioned there were three places where surface water runs off my property. And I'm wondering, with all these roads going in, are we making sure that all that water is still getting underneath those roads and getting to the, to the north?
Well, we're not going to dam it up so that water's pounding on your property, if that's what you're asking.
Right.
Yeah.
So what's the plan?
Well, there'll be swales or, you know, whatever's cut in once we get into that grading of that phase of the subdivision. This is just for the roadway, obviously, when we start the subdivision.
I understand, yeah, yeah, but. But it also still has to go underneath that road, too. Is there a big tile going underneath that road?
It'll all tie together. There'll, there'll be rear yard drains in these properties.
Okay. I've, I've videoed all the places where it's going off my property and the existing soils that are there with the water running, so. Obviously, all those houses, when they're built, it's going to be flat, so.
Right.
Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
Instead of water retention will exceed the requirements?
Correct.
Because I know in several developments, the water retention studies only take into account the property involved in the development, not the surrounding properties, which they should take that into consideration, in my estimation. Have you done that?
Correct. We have, and obviously, this is typically for a development, your critical storm is what the county requires. It's usually around a 10-year, but for this, it's a 25-year, so you're actually withholding, retaining more water before it leaves the site, so. Plus the additional that is being provided, it'll be more than what's required.
Chris, you got anything, or?
The width of that connector road that goes through there? That's all we're here for today, is just that connector road?
That's all, it's right now, Phase 1, right, 28-foot.
28 feet wide?
Back-to-back of curb.
Curb to curb, 28 feet.
Correct.
No on-street parking?
No on-street parking.
It's going to be labeled as no on-street? I mean, we have a few developments in the city where they did the developments, and some are 26 feet wide. And they, there's, they didn't put the no parking signs up, so it's kind of tough to get through there. And then the other question is, I don't know if you guys have worked out the townhouse end of that? I see there's parking places for the townhouses, so there's no on-street parking.
That, yeah, that's separate.
What about the width of the road? I'm sure you guys are good, I'm sure, well, you guys have the dimensions of all of our trucks and the wheelbase and everything.
Right.
So that's going to run through your auto turn program to make sure that that's going to be able to get through?
Correct. That'll be a separate consultant that's doing that for that developer.
So we're just here for the connector road?
Just the connector road, that's for Phase 1.
Okay, so on Oberlin Road end, you guys are going to tap into that 4-inch water main, or tie that?
Just tie in, yes. It's going to be, yeah, the 24-inch will tie into by the turnpike.
Okay.
Oberlin Road all the way through. We're just tying into the 4-inch.
Okay. So there'll be a hydrant at that end of the?
Yes.
That end of the, okay. All right. Then the other question is, that property to the north of that, where that used to be a machine shop and now it's a propane place back there? Just north of that?
We're aware of it.
Okay.
Okay. So that's all going to be forested area is what it, is what's on the original plan, I believe?
Yeah, we're not disturbing that area up there.
And it's about, it's about 700 feet from the tank.
To the house, to the backyard?
First home that would be on the townhouse.
So mounting that up wouldn't, would that interfere with your drainage and that pond? Because that one pond, I think, is existing already, isn't it?
There's an existing pond, yeah, correct.
Would that interfere with? Because around some of that development, it's mounted and tree. But that end, it looks like it's just, it just says forested area, so I don't know if that's...
Yeah, on the landscape plan, correct.
So is it going, is it going, it's going to be flat, it's not going to be?
Yeah. And that's subject to change, obviously. That could be, there could be more landscaping added.
Our intent is not to touch the natural features. Have you been through there? That woods is so dense that you can't walk through there. We don't intend to go through there, without any of it, just really the natural. I think the concern might be from the tank affecting the whole site. Well, I think the big thing is at least it's propane, you know, so that, you know, it's not something that explodes. It's a burning fuel.
Ooh.
You can only explore, trust me. Well, okay, I know a little bit of off-the-travel, I'm off-the-travel. But what it is, is generally, a tank like that, the only reason why it would ever rupture, or say, if you want to call it explosions, like, the only reason it ruptures is because there's enough, enough heat outside of the propane.
Where you get an LNG and it explodes.
It expands.
Yes.
Right. But it's not an explosive device, so it doesn't blow out what it, it actually breaks.
Dissipates. Supposed to.
So it's, I guess the question is, is it, is it a bomb that's going to blow up with this tank? Generally, not. That's, that's not what we're really doing.
Generally, not, but it could. There's, there have been LNGs in Texas and stuff, you know, they destroyed properties. North Carolina was the latest one. Down in Texas, on the railhead, wiped out a whole town.
I think the big concern is, how does that happen? Generally, what happens is the valve that's on the tank?
Yes.
It actually isn't fast enough to release the pressure that the leak is creating. But in this case, from what I understand, and I don't, I'm not inspecting that tank. I understand they do a third-party inspection every year.
They do.
They submit that to the fire department.
They do.
As long as that valve is sized right, there would have to then be that out, some heat source it's creating. If it was in the building, I might be hooked.
Well, it's, you know, one of the concerns is it's, you know, we're, we're talking right now, a 32,000 gallon tank. That's not all they have, though. They have little ones in which are more of a pain than the big ones are at times, you know. You get a bunch of them going off, next thing you know, you're going to have a big one.
I wasn't, and I don't know the business, but I thought that those tanks were there for the sake of filling up and shipping the summer tops. I didn't think they were filled constantly. The mother ship was full of gas.
It is, it is. And then they have a, they have a, they have a building that they, like the tow motor, or the tow motors and whatever, they use the propane inside of facilities, they, they fill them there off that, off that big tank, so.
Well, it's definitely a concern.
Yes, that's, and that's my job, is to make sure this stuff, and I like this, I like your comment about firefighters. I know real water is into business to sell water, but when you're selling the water, they're at many key points. Yeah, I have a little concern about firefighters instead of calling them flushing points.
Well, and I think that we might be able to help you there, because I did talk to Paul. Well, that's just Paul. And I know that there's not a fire hydrant at Oberlin. And so what we talked about was potentially running a hydrant to your property. Because I know you guys have a big water tank that you, that you may bring on site if there was a calamity. So maybe the best thing to do is get your water service from a hydrant. And we're not close to that, I think, that's it. I told Paul we were.
Good, good. It's somewhere.
Thanks.
John, I have a question for you. In that wooded area in the north northeast corner up there, that's going to be kept?
Yes, sir.
I can't recall which page of the drawing, but I saw something in there that said to be cleared.
The, this whole white area, David, it's there, that is all to be saved. There is no clearing to be done there. This area up front is already cleared. And there's an existing depression there. There's existing, I don't want to call it a pond, but it definitely would retain water. So that's really what we're doing there, is mod a pond existing. But everything to the west of that is staying exactly as it is today.
I believe, okay, you're, you're gonna keep the trees up there, maybe as a natural water?
Absolutely.
There's four words running out there on Will Road, is what they, I think that right was like a ten-eighths or something.
Sa- that's sanitary.
No, no, no.
Storm, storm will actually be going back.
You have a spillway.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a small?
You have a pipe coming out toward Oberlin Road?
Yes, a small pipe, yeah.
Is that an emergency overflow? Yeah. Well, there's an emergency overflow, just in case that some big event required it to go. Where it's going now. But what we're doing is actually grab all that water and bring it back. It actually comes all the way back and releases up to the north. All that water, that pond actually comes all the way back now. So we've thought, it's a natural source of discharge, it's not built on Oberlin. And it is that.
We, we didn't want it to go to Oberlin Road. We wanted it to all go back to the ditch.
We're pulling that water back and actually pushing it back to the north, back to the turnpike, and getting it out of there at that point. Because we know there's a, a situation at Oberlin and the new entrance ways that is holding water. Mr. Pilarsh's property absolutely will attest that there's a ton of water there and it's an issue. So we know that there's not enough capacity at Oberlin to service all that water, so we're actually forcing it to come back to the bus by multiple pipes. Not the cheapest way, but I think it's the safest way. I'm sorry, you might wanna comment on that.
No, you got it, you got it.
I only, I only, I don't practice engineering anymore. These guys are experts.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Flinch?
Yeah, Lonny, I just wanted to comment on the stormwater management, um, because it is all going to the west, and for the township's standpoint, we actually prefer that. If you really looked at the areas, you would see that typically, a portion of this today goes towards the Baton House ditch. And if you follow that Baton House ditch, it does a long meandering way going north and then heading to the west, and then eventually connecting right where the east branch of, um, Beaver Creek is, which is where this development now will take all the stormwater that way. And that will keep that from, you know, creating that head pressure there in the Baton House ditch, which right now backs up and floods on Stang Road, Oberlin Road intersection, and then Two Points along Oberlin Road. So hopefully, this'll help relieve some of that. I don't know if Pete Zwick from the, uh, Lorain County Engineers Office has talked with you gentlemen at all, but I did provide Pete with all of your contact information when the township was looking at, uh, how to get these various, uh, drainage courses on a maintenance program, and what the cost is, and what we have to go about doing that. But I, I was hoping Pete would've contacted you. This would've been in probably the January timeframe. Matter of fact, it was January sixth, when I'd asked him to get ahold of you to see exactly what the stormwater plan was, you know, prior to it being, uh, completed. But I have seen your plans, and I see us all taking it to the west, and that's actually preferable for us, and getting it in that direction.
We have not heard from Mr. Zwick.
Okay. Well, I'll talk with Pete then.
And in fairness, the plans were actually submitted directly to Robert Kleiber. So those plans are probably, maybe they've breached Pete at this point, but we don't know it. Or you might know that, I don't, I don't think he is.
Bob Kleiber was at the same January sixth meeting, so he'd be aware of it. Um, but Pete generally is the guy, when we're dealing with ditch maintenance and drainage, um, we're usually dealing with Pete. Bob just happened to be at this meeting, uh, when we were discussing that, because as a matter of fact, uh, plans came in that day. Some preliminary plans have since then changed things, um, because then it kinda diverted our meeting from stormwater and the township in general to looking at your specific development plans that were sent in.
Well, I think, I think that's the, the point that, you know, initially, when it was laid out, I, I was questioning Chris, saying, what are we doing here? But he said, you know, from an engineering standpoint, let's get this water onto this street. And I think it's taking a very conservative approach to protecting the township, and certainly protecting our neighbors.
Yeah, I was, I was happy to see it. I was following you take some of it east, and then you redirect it back to the west afterwards, so that, that is going to be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
Need a, uh, motion to?
I will motion, uh, to table until revisions are made for the setbacks on Basin A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay. Did you hear that? Roll call. Dylan, yes? Conradi?
Yes.
Arsar?
Yes.
Sernay?
Yes.
So, is it possible to get that back to us for next month, and we can take action?
Absolutely. We would, we would sure hope that you can say or let. Now, I appreciate it.
A lot of corrections to make. I, I think we'd like to make sure that, that we're in the same ballpark.